Crowd there.
Afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. We welcome everyone and ask that everyone arise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a few guests in the Zoom land. Commissioner first, Commissioner Tom Morello is in Zoom land. I see Aaron Coker from the Sheriff's Department. And then two other individuals, someone Charles Iton and Sue Reynolds.
That might be the sheriff.
Oh, okay. In the Board of Commissioners room, we have myself, Kate Coyle, and Commissioner Godu. We also have Superintendent Henry, Chantel Patonan, Trek Nickerson, Jude Gates, and Leila Matilla. So with that, we will begin, and I'm not sure, perhaps Commissioner Godu, maybe it'd be make more sense for you to make the motions because Commissioner Tom Morello is remote, just to hear easier. Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yep, the only, I can't see my picture. I wanted to see me on the screen.
Well, you have to turn your camera on.
I don't know why it's not doing, but that's all right. I know what I look like, I guess.
Okay.
I'll figure that out.
Commissioner Godu, could you lead us off with the consent agenda with first the meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and May twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Nice job, Leila.
Thank you, Leila. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the HR recruitment report. And what we've seen, what I can say, I mean, it's, it's still looking really quite promising. Do you want to speak?
I, I have, uh, I'm still concerned with our situation. And earlier this week, I asked Chantel to give me an evaluation, some numbers on how many staff and how many agency people we have hiring. And those numbers are for RNs and LPNs. We have thirty-six staff members and twenty-three agency members. Still a lot of nurses that were hired from the agency. But on the LNAs, we have thirty-seven staff and forty-two agency. We're still upside down on the, on the agency side for LNAs. And I asked kind of at the last minute for Autumn to work on this report. I'm not sure that it matches up exactly. But I, I, I think we need those basic numbers each week to remind us that we still have a lot of hiring to do. Forty-two LNAs to hire. We should not be taking our foot off the gas. And I'm not saying that we are. I'm just saying if there's anything we can do to step it up, it would be, it would be helpful. But other than that, the board is nice.
If, if I may, a few things. So working, continuing, we brought in the LNA group that has started the clinical with us that just finished through the local high schools. I've reached out to a different company, LNA Health Freers, and have a meeting next week with them to see about becoming a clinical site as well to get more room here from a recruitment standpoint. We are hiring. It's still not great numbers, but it's drastically better than it was nine months ago. We've been hiring more. We definitely have lost a few individuals. However, there's differences around accountability that we're doing with attendance and some of those measures. So two of the last LNA, we last revoked no call, no shows for multiple days in a row. So things of that nature. I have a few emails out to nursing schools. I have a contract, the board that I sit on through, that's an LPM school, to try and become a clinical site. Once we become a clinical site, they're going to look to try and hire a instructor to hopefully come to this area and support in with them to come towards that we would have nurses here on clinical as well, because you can recruit a lot. And truthfully, working in seeing this building, because they go in rotations, they would see others too. We would sell our, we would sell ourself. It's a beautiful building. It's beautiful ratios. It's beautiful just in general. So those are components that we're still working on or my team and I are still working on. The other pieces is our employee engagement supervisor started last week. She has been rounding. She actually came in at three this morning, spent a lot of time with night shift, brought them snacks. They shared feedback. But as we're getting more information and continue to get more information, it's allowing us to make positive changes in the culture. And with those positive changes, we've been able to address things that seem really silly, but have an impact in people wanting to stay in that kind of impact. That in conjunction to hopefully the approval with the budget of the change rates. Some of the conversations I've already had proactively with HR is doing, and I believe we've spoken about it too, Jude, doing like a county job fair as we discussed in the beginning, where we would do it in the atrium. There would be new positions coming on for the new building, positions for my team in general, kind of divided. I'm sure DOC working as an advertisement as a whole county, because maybe someone's coming in for Jude's position and thinks, oh, I have a daughter. Maybe they'd be great for an LNA, et cetera. So have already started preliminary conversations around some of those items. In addition, I spoke with the HR at Sedexo, who will be joining in July as well to say, you know, if you'd like to have a table. And they offered once we pick a date or a time range, they have the analytics, because they're so large, that can tell us the best time indeed for this area to hire. And will work with us in conjunction to that as well. So completely have not lost focus. I can assure you that. I still too do not want those numbers. But there are a lot of steps and metrics that we have been taking in conjunction with different departments, with HR, and steps that we're hoping to see over the summer. To HR's point, when we talked about it, it didn't make sense to advertise yet until we had the approval of the new rates, because that would be able to be a bigger draw as well. So a lot of those conversations or stuff happening behind the scenes around hiring. And we too really want to get out of the negative, but in general. And I have a few other items we're working on. Autumn just updated for us. Flyer and looking at being able to even post it out in the community in different places too.
Excellent. Excellent. If you need any assistance in those efforts, I appreciate all of them. Let us know. We need to buy muffins or whatever we have to do.
Yeah, no, I think there's a lot of pieces that there's opportunities. And I know that there's a lot of conversations kind of happening, joint with different departments too, on how we can strategize and do that. Kind of do some of those metrics to continue.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Moving on to the surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight eight A for the Department of Corrections.
I make a motion to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight, call it A to eight dash A, and declare a Speed Queen dryer from the Department of Corrections surplus with the item to be properly disposed of.
Second.
Discussion. Value is under fifteen hundred dollars and it's not in use, so.
Right.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have the accounts payable list, June twelfth.
I move to approve the June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five counts payable list totaling one million, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four and forty-six cents.
Second.
Discussion. Pat, do you want to?
No, I mean, obviously, the check run portion itself is under a million dollars. Most of that other eight hundred thousand plus is actually made up of the eight hundred twenty thousand for the April claims from Cigna. And we do have a few hundred thousand dollars that did already come in for stop loss. So there is an offset that is happening for some of the claims.
Great. On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to commissioners' updates. Anybody have anything to offer this week?
I just offer that I'm very pleased with the progress we're making on the solar array and ever sources into the connect. They seem to be moving full speed ahead and hopefully we get connected in the next ten to fifteen days.
Yeah, that would be great.
Jude, do you have any other indication that, any indication that it might not or?
Signature on that most recent piece of paperwork that they're ready to go. Great. So that's the last word I've heard. It's not done yet, but we're very, very close. Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tom Morello, do you have anything to add today?
Nope. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just add that next week we are meeting on the eighteenth before the Board of Commissioners meeting will be at three. And then we have the full exec, I mean, full delegation meeting on the budget and vote on the budget. Okay, moving on, we have a bid waiver request for Gropone Ford for Department of Corrections.
I make a motion to approve the bid waiver request for Gropone Ford in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars for the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-five Ford Transit passenger van at the state of New Hampshire's contract price, as recommended by the superintendent. Both corrections?
Superintendent.
Second.
Yeah.
Discussion.
I, I, I've looked at this carefully and based on my determination, I think that this is a goodbye. And I think that I looked at, I went, I had somebody who's in the business take a look at the, what was available on the used car market. And normally he can find anything, but what he found was two years old, it was going to save us ten thousand dollars. And that's not as good a deal as what we have right here. So I, I, I'm supporting this. I think it's a good idea.
And it's, it is important to note that all those bid waiver that Jude, your team, Jimmy specifically was, and thank you to Jimmy, because it feels a lot more comfortable doing a bid waiver in this, for this value, when you know that there's been a lot of research done in the lead up. And in this case, I think it goes to Jimmy who really exhausted efforts to try to look at the, both the used market. And it's a relief by your own, by your, but like that the used market as well as what was available new to fund it. And it's like, it's readily available because the need, the need is imminent.
I just say that, again, Jude and Jimmy, I want to say thank you too. I mean, I'm not a car guy, car van guy. And I have to work on it. So putting over there, and he was looking at used. I said, I opened up to Jude, I look at used, I'll work with anything that's just going to be, you know, wherever he has to work on it. He did a lot of work on it and I appreciate it.
Yes, I know.
And we can, looks like we have money left over, enough money in the inmates out of the facility to support it. Is that what you're gonna?
Well, I was gonna say just also that, you know, since they're utilizing state contract pricing, states are going through bid process for many, 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 many different models of vehicles. So the state or E-SCRAM is clean too, if you want. So a bid process has been done.
Yeah. Though not ours.
Not.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Oh, I just want to say one thing.
Oh, sorry.
But it's okay. I don't, I don't do the hand thing and all that. I have trouble just getting this thing to run. I just want to say I'm thrilled that we're getting it. I spent four hours in the other one and for the last six weeks, I've been going to the chiropractor on Friday morning. So I'm looking forward to a new van.
Okay, thank you for that lovely addition. On the, I'm going to start on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have a defense and indemnification request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-nine dash A colon two.
I move to defend and indemnify the Rocky Ham County Department of Corrections Superintendent Jason Henry and any individual employees that may be named later under John and Jane Does, except for former Officer D'Angelo A. Cruz Rivera pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-nine A colon two in legal matters relating to civil action number two one eight dash two oh two five dash C V dash zero zero five six one and two one eight dash two oh two five dash C B zero zero five six two.
Second.
Any discussion? This is pretty standard.
Yeah, same on that one.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have an inmate administrative transfer pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B twenty-one.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-five pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty B twenty-one, transferring one inmate to Hillsborough County as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have a travel and training request to the NAPSA Annual Conference.
I move to approve a travel and training request for two Department of Corrections employees, A M and J M, to attend the National Association of Pretrial Services Agencies Annual Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, to be held Sunday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five through Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at an estimated cost of four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one and ninety-four cents, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion. I'll just say that most people that we hold at the House of Corrections are pretrial, not sentenced. So this type of conference is very valuable in that, like, this is the population that we're primarily dealing with.
And when we had the presentation done by Allison K. Moore, talked about adult services. This is what she does. And she's tried to get into this conference multiple times, tender a, trying to get a scholarship. Who just never got one, plus our pretrial services. So we're sending both to take a look at. I think, I think we have some things that we need to expand on, but I wanted to go to the conference and find out legally where we're at and what, what is the trend out there, so.
Thanks.
Very good.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have Finance Office, TV Equipment Finance Capital Lease Proposal.
I move to approve the TV Finance Equipment. I move to approve the TV Equipment Finance Incorporated Capital Lease Proposal at a rate of four point four percent and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Discussion. This first from Karma Equipment, but the rate is even lower than what we had, was previously set by like, I don't know, it was four point four versus four point five or?
Five, yeah, five four.
Five four, I think it was.
Yeah.
I know. Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have some write-offs for long-term care in the Sheriff's Office.
I move that Rocky Ham County approves the fiscal two thousand and twenty-five long-term care services write-off totaling one hundred and fifty-three thousand, six forty-two and eight cents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services and Sheriff Office write-offs totaling one hundred and nine dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance and the High Sheriff.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, it's, it's for a total of twenty-four patient liability counts, which is like the private pay portion of Medicaid. And then we also had about what thirteen or so private pay amounts. There is one of the private payments. We still do have an active lien. There's actually a couple that unfortunately I passed away, so within a few months of one another. So that's the one that we do have still a lien on. And again, we, just because it's a write-off, we don't give up all collection efforts, but.
And I actually just got a lien given on a different account not that long ago.
And I think would, you know, some of the efforts with what we've discussed about how our billing practices and accepting credit cards or at, you know, ACH will be very helpful in trying to reduce things. This is, I mean, the goals for of that is to reduce this end of write-off.
Yeah, there's, if I may, so we, for the credit cards, were hopefully finalizing that kind of piece of it. It did kind of budget chuck over for a little while there. In addition, we've been sitting down as a group with Kendra, myself, Kathy, and evaluating, there's never really been a formal process for Medicaid. So what tends to happen, and we found with a lot of the write-offs, was that by the time we were getting involved with Medicaid, we were months kind of past when it should have been filed. And then it couldn't retroback far enough. So we have been building out a process, a procedure, a system. We have our final meeting this week to kind of finalize some of the tweaks and things we found that weren't working to kind of roll out. But we put other measures in place to be more proactive with our Medicaid specialists attending skilled meetings, proactively talking to families, explaining the Medicaid process, getting all of that done timely. Changed a lot of our practices around that so that we're getting in before the need and not three, four months in of non-payment that has been resulting in these large write-offs as well. In addition, we do RCM, though we took a month or two off with everything with the budget. But we do a monthly RCM with the assisted living team and then as well for the nurse at home, where we're proactively identifying accounts and having conversations around monies owed, opposed to waiting for them to be larger bills and then taking appropriate actions and conversations. So we're still building out a lot of those processes in the hopes to resolve these or minimize them. There'll always be some, but minimize maybe is the best.
And that's the goal, right? You just, we are going to do our best to collect us in front of him. So we're not trying to, you know.
Yeah, and these are really older items, as you can tell by some of the dates. I mean, the vast majority of them were before the end of two thousand and nineteen. So that's what we're looking for, so.
Okay, any further discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For Human Resources, we have the discussion about the dairy imaging Primax recommendations.
Yes, I've been working, trying to work with dairy imaging back and forth since probably the end of December into January. This is to allow us when we have to send somebody out to have an X-ray due to a positive TV, they have to have an X-ray. We searched for a company that would do it. Dairy, dairy imaging said they could do that for us, set up an account and bill us. The HIPAA contract went over to Primax. It came back. They wanted a section changed in it and it has taken this long for their legal team because they were opening up a couple of other venues in different parts of the state. It's come back and they can't accept it because they're telling us it's their health information. Because it's, the liability is for, on, on us if, if Martha, should we use this information, health information inappropriately? Because she's going to be going into their health portal to extract the information once the X-ray is done. So it goes into there and it sits in their system. She goes into the system. She pulls out that information that tells her whether it's positive or negative and then it's settled by the radiologist. So they're not going to be able to.
Dairy engine.
Dairy imaging.
Is not able to sign.
Right, because it's their health protected, you know, their health protected information. It's their portal, their system. That's where it resides. So.
So can't they notify us in a different way without us needing to get into their portal?
I can go back. It might be via disc or something, but being able to have access to the portal when it's there, it's instant and she can move on. I don't know what the turnaround time would be to send stuff in another fashion. It wouldn't be via email. Because that's not encrypted. They can't do it encrypted in any way.
How many people do we send for X-rays?
We have three so far that we've already sent in the last probably three months. They did it for us because we didn't think that this was going to be a long issue for us, them to get back to. They've honored the rate, which is a low rate of seventy-five dollars for X-ray and the radiologist to read it and get back to us on it. But we didn't realize this is going to be a long process to get mitigated. So I just, I, I can look at someplace else, but it's been hard to try to find a venue that would contract in. When we were with COEH, we had an overall contract because we contracted into that service for Martha. She wasn't our employee. But now we're establishing our own, like with Quest Lab. We established that. There was some sign-offs on that. She's able to get into the portal for them, but it was different.
It seems like there should be.
Yeah.
Something.
But I've reached out to, we reached out to Convenient MD and we had a conversation with them. I've asked them for an agreement. It doesn't look like they have an agreement. It's just a sheet that tells us how much it costs. So I then asked them to send me some more information over. So we did send that off to Primax the other day. I expect by tomorrow I'll have something back, but I don't know that I'll have an agreement to sign with them. It'll just be a rate thing that I'll bring to the board that will you accept this rate that they'll charge to us.
Well, we have a good rate with dairy imaging. There's, there's no problem with dairy imaging, except that we can't get into their portal.
Right.
To me, if I, I would ask dairy imaging, so how, how, what are the options for us to get?
It would be a.
The results.
You could get a disc.
And how quickly would that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you're concerned with timing. How quickly will they turn the disc around?
I can find out from them. It may mean that we'll have no contract with them. It, so then we're interested something. If we have to have a contract, I don't know if we're obligated to have a contract or?
Or we can have a contract for the rate.
That would be it, just a rate sheet.
Well.
I just want to know that that's a.
That's all we need.
Well, it's.
Six or eight times a year at seventy-five bucks, you know, not worth spending too much time on it.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we are up to the revised per diem wage schedule.
Make a motion to amend the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six per diem wage schedules to include the per diem nurse practitioner position as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Discussion. This is just to keep.
Second.
I did talk to the person. They will accept it. They are asking, and I approved a rate of eighty-five dollars because I kept it in that window bandwidth. So they are working through the process now to go to orientation and they'll come on board. So I'm very excited about that. More so for Martha. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello.
Yes.
I vote yes. Next, we have the Easter seals fee for non-attendance.
Shall we start with the discussion?
Wait, Sue is here.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you so much.
Sue, do you want us to begin by talking to us a little bit about why? We're just trying to understand what the reason for the change in fee is and, you know, the implications of if someone doesn't come, some of those.
Yes, absolutely. So I did send a letter. I think you guys reviewed it at one of your previous meetings. We changed our rate structure from fee for service to fee for spot. So that went into effect for our private pay folks as of May twelfth. We are reaching out to other funders and the VA to support this as well. But what's happening is we have a lot of folks that, but we have between like sixteen and twenty percent absentee rate at this point, which is huge. As you can imagine, we're still paying staff the same rate. We're still putting the lights on. We're still providing food. We're still providing the great opportunity for them to come to program. We're just losing money if people don't show up. So whether it's if they're on vacation, if they have, want to spend the day with their family. Some of the things that we have put into place, we're pretty flexible with allowing them to alternate days if they need to. Sometimes that is an option for them. Sometimes it's not. And then if they are on a medical hold, so if they have been hospitalized or are in rehab from hospitalization, we would put them on a medical hold and they would be excused for paying. So we would not expect them to pay for the day. In order to, you know, provide good rates to the staff, staff retention is super important. We just feel like it's something that we need to move for. Doctors' offices, a lot of other medical facilities have the same structure. If you don't show up for a medical appointment or you don't cancel within a certain amount of time, then you are charged for that fee. And I believe, to my knowledge, other day programs are heading in that direction. So I think for Rocky Ham County, it's not a tremendous amount of money, maybe over the, since July of last year, it might be about two thousand dollars with the absences that we have. I know we had one individual that you guys support, four days a week, was just out for three weeks on vacation. So the other thing that, that we would ask is if the county supported this, we would also ask for the co-pay from the. So the other thing that, that we would ask is if the county supported this, we would also ask for the copay from the individual to support the full. Cost of a hundred dollars a day.
What, I mean, what's the cancellation, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tom Barello, why don't you begin?
I, I actually, last week I was a little adamant that I, I don't support it, and there's a few reasons for it. One of them is that, you know, there was five groups, there's now two. Sue, you guys don't send anybody home if Tom doesn't come to daycare. The other thing is, you know, when you talk, your letter said supplies. I mean, if I'm not there, I don't need toilet paper or Depends. And if I'm not there as far as food, you don't make me a sandwich, so I don't, I looked at the numbers. Easter sales, I think, is more financially set than people think, but I tell you right now, man, last year. As of May of twenty twenty-five, Easter sales has got forty thousand eighty dollars from the county. Where Salem Haven has got twenty-eight thousand, Silverthorn, twenty-eight thousand nine seventy-five. And I compared what Salem is doing to you guys, you know. I looked at the Medicaid clients, they do a hundred and three days of care provided, ten individuals cared, cared for. You folks don't do any Medicaid, I mean, you guys, I think, do pretty good. Last year, they gave you, under the watch of the former nursing home administrator and the commissioners. They gave you guys fifteen thousand dollars in extra monies out of that budget. I don't support it, I think we're real good to you guys, and, and I don't support it. If they don't come, that's not our problem, I mean, we're real good to you guys, so I'm not gonna support it, but I'm only one of two. I, I just don't think the rationale is there to support and support this, so I'm gonna be a no.
Can I just say that, so we don't make meals on the spot anymore, we preorder them a week ahead of time. And supplies, we're not really talking about toilet paper, we're talking about program supplies to keep them engaged and entertained while they're here. Those costs, the light, the lights are still on, the heat's still running, the AC's still running, those things are. You know, those costs don't go away. Also, we do, we do have quite a few folks in program that are funded by Medicaid. Actually, thirty-one, twenty-two percent of our folks are funded by Medicaid, just not, they just don't live in Rockingham County unfortunately. So you probably don't see those numbers, Tom. And then the other thing I will say, overall, we, you know, we, we do lose money on a regular basis just because of, of funding. We've lost seventeen percent of our funding has been lost through grants from individuals not attending. So, but I, I do appreciate your concern as well.
No, I mean, I've supported, supported daycare forever. And I looked at the other thing, I mean, you guys have twenty-nine days of care approved by the Board of Commissioners, custom rates. Salem has never asked, I mean, unless the charts are wrong, I pulled the charts this morning. And the charts are showing me the hundred and three days, they're showing me that you guys have custom rates approved by the Board of Commissioners. Twenty-nine days care for, for three individuals, where Salem has had none. I mean, and I don't wanna remind you guys, you guys are Hillsborough, and you get a few people from Rockingham County. But I think we're real good to you and I think to ask for more money, in my opinion, is just not something that sat good with me. So I'm only one of three, so that's my take on. But I do, so I want people to know that I, I do definitely support adult medical, adult daycare. And I actually called Chantel, our nursing home administrator, the other day and I said, you know, if I ever could get a chance to get another feather in my cap. I would open it back up if we can straighten out the staffing thing, cause I would love to see it outside that commissioner's office again. And hopefully I'm home for a while and I'll do that. Steve will get his housing across the street and I'll get my adult make a daycare.
We definitely need more day programs, so I would.
Yeah, I do, I do, Sue, and, and you know, Sue, I know you personally, you live in my town, I, I know you. It's nothing to do with you, I just, you know, it's, this is a business, it's a hundred million dollar business. And this is a small token, it's a small token, but I have to say how I feel, so I apologize if you think it's personal. But you know, I support you guys and wish the best for you.
Yep, thank you, no, I don't, I don't think it's personal and we're not asking for additional funding. We're just asking to cover what you've already approved for folks to come to program.
Okay.
Commissioner Godu, do you have your question?
So just to clarify, we approve somebody to come four days a week, they show up for three days a week. Currently, you would charge us for those three days that they did show up and not the fourth, is that, that's the current situation. Now, how much time do they have in advance to contact you to say? Hey, I can't make it on this date because I have a doctor's appointment or because I'm going to dinner with my son?
I don't know that I understand your question, what do you mean, how much time?
If they wanna cancel, that they're not going to attend the daycare, you know, is, what, how much time do they have and how is that working?
They can let us know whenever they know, if they let us know, like, even, so if somebody lets us know on a Monday, they can't come in on Tuesday. We always say, can you come in Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday? Would that work for you? Sometimes it does, sometimes it does, so really to answer your question the day before?
But I think the issue that Commissioner Godu, do you mind if I?
No, no, go right ahead.
You said that there's someone, you order meals and preparations a week in advance.
We do.
For the individual who's going, and but you have an individual who's going on vacation for three weeks. So even if they told you on a Friday that they're leaving for vacation on Monday. Then you should be able to accommodate or make changes for at least the end of the week or the next two weeks, right? In those instances?
For meals, yeah, but for staffing, we're. I mean, supplies are already pre-bought, pre-purchased, the lights are still on, whether they're here, the electricity's still running, the AC, heat, whatever it is. So, yeah, all of the daily expenses are still continuing, staff are still paid.
But the point is that you can account for it in, so that there. Theoretically, you shouldn't be charging on those days with advance notice. Just like if you're making a reservation, you make a reservation at a restaurant and you have twenty-four hours to cancel or else they're gonna charge you. What is your cancellation policy? Or do you have none, it's just if you're signed up, you're, you're locked in?
So right now for private pay, that changed May twelfth, it's a pay for the spot, not pay for service. So if they're signing an agreement where they're coming two days a week, then they are, they are held responsible for those two days a week. If they don't show up, they are charged. We can cancel their meals, I mean, you're talking five dollars a day for their meals, which is, that's a very small amount for the, the overall cost of program. We don't send staff home if we don't have clients come in, cause we wouldn't have any staff, we did that.
So are you suggesting that the sixteen or seventeen percent absentee rate are people who don't show, don't tell you? And you're totally surprised each time?
They, a lot of them call us the morning of and say, oh, I have a graduation today or my son's taking me out for the day. Sometimes we don't get noticed at all, we have to call them and say, hey, why aren't you here? Sometimes we do have advance notice that we know somebody's going to be out. The individual that we, that I just mentioned was out, was scheduled to be out for a week and a half, she ended up taking three. So no, we didn't know about that, we anticipate them coming in and we still run the amazing program that we do whether they're here or not.
Well, personally, I think that your cancellation policy should be reviewed. I, I think that there's, that there should, should be some pressure on the individuals. That if they don't call by a certain time, that they have to pay, just like you, you, that's what you're forcing the private pay to. You know, we're in a charitable situation here and you're asking us to continue with the charity when they don't show up. And I'm not pleased with the cancellation policy, cause I, I think it needs some attention. Just, just, I mean, it's real easy from the company's standpoint, hey, you got the slot, you pay, that's it. And I, I, I get that, but I, I think that our mission here is a little different and I'd rather spread the money out. And frankly, we're giving you guys eighty bucks a day and we're giving Silverthorn twenty-five dollars a day. We're, we're providing the lion's share, I, I, in fact, I need to talk to Silverthorn, I wanna find out, you know, how they're making up the difference. Cause, you know, they're not, they're privately, you know.
I, I wouldn't, Silverthorn is left because we're paying the difference in the Medicaid there opposed to.
That's, that's right, that's all we're doing, is the difference in Medicaid. But, so all the folks over there are paying out of their pocket, you know. This, this just doesn't seem like a good deal to, for the county.
Okay. Does anybody have anything further? I think we sort of went to discussion before the actual motion, so.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve a change in the fee structure for Easter sales adult day program effective May twelve, twenty twenty-five. From fee for, from fee for service to fee for spot. Requiring payment for the day's individuals are scheduled to be in the program regardless of attendance.
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello.
No.
Commissioner Godu.
No.
And I vote no. Move, next we have, there's the Wellsky Corporation License and Service Agreement. At this point, because of more information, I move to table that for, table that, that agreement approval.
Second.
Any just further discussion on the table? Commissioner Tom Barello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, we're gonna go right into department head updates and we'll start over in Zoom land. And I see Kathy Stacy has joined us, good afternoon Kathy.
Good afternoon, everybody, hope you're all enjoying this beautiful day. Not really much to report, I do, I don't know if you guys are gonna be talking about. The research I did with regards to the inquiry from Commissioner Godu. On the property there.
Yeah, I have new business, we're gonna take that up.
Okay, alright, good, I have nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, I see Charles iPhone, which I assume is. Yep, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, nothing really new to report, enjoy the weather and have a great rest of your week.
Okay, thank you, and I see Erin Coker here, but I presume that, Erin, do you have anything else to add to the sheriff's report? Saying none, we'll just. Charles Nickerson.
Sorry, I might steal Chantel's thing. But we just got word today from DHHS about pro share estimates. And Brockham is coming in over budget at seven point four one one million, so that's, yes.
You're talking about revenue.
So, so a hundred sixty thousand to the good. And we actually, I wasn't surprised this was gonna happen, but we actually switched from having a negative reconciliation adjustment. For like the twenty twenty-three estimated pro share back then versus the actual amount. Cause they do like a preliminary destroview every year, except for every fifth year, it's, it's an audit of the Medicaid cost board. Anyways, we have seven hundred and eleven thousand dollar positive adjustment. Where usually it's a negative adjustment because of how the state does depreciation calculation versus how one of those does. Following CMS, that's the same depreciation cap, but anyway, so good news there, so a hundred sixty thousand to the good. And so it makes me even a little bit more comfortable with, with what we're doing for next year's budget, so on pro share. So I feel confident in the seven and a quarter million budget for, or proposed for twenty twenty-six. So that was big news that, that came over. Obviously, oh, there was a, we're having some interesting discussions about the current audit term. It sounds like they may not be able to hook their end up doing the, I know, I gave you, yeah, about the twenty-four audit. So I actually had outreach from Scott McIntyre, one of the partners over at CBiz about. Them assigning actually over to Fashon Klukke if possible, doing the twenty-four audit. And so I had a lengthy discussion with Matt Murray from Fashon Klukke yesterday as well. About just how things are with the counties and unique things with us, comparing, contrasting us versus Hillsborough. Cause he has to do the Hillsborough's audit, so just going over, kind of prepping them for, well, what was originally gonna be the twenty-five. But they seem amenable to taking on the twenty-four. Yes, so what would have to happen is, I mean, there's some certain things that auditors have to follow as far as notification wise. For not fulfilling requirements and steps that subsequent auditors have to follow as well. So I think there'd have to be some sort of official communication from CBiz about basically giving up the signing.
Right.
That fiscal twenty-four audit, they want to keep the single audit engagements though. And then we would need to do a separate engagement letter with Fashon Klukke just for the twenty-four audit services. I'd be proposing a bid waiver because we very don't do bid process going forward. We know Fashon Klukke of the three that responded was very much less than the other two.
Right.
And so, and because of their expertise, already proven expertise, they do, they've been doing Hillsborough's audit timely. That, so from the time standpoint of what would be a cost standpoint too. I'd be asking for a big waiver to allow Fashon Klukke to do the twenty-four audit. And so instead of them working on twenty-five preliminary in June.
But it will probably help them with the twenty-five.
Yes.
With the, having the twenty-four data, so.
Yes, and my understanding is that Fashon Klukke just went to the same like electronic work paper system that CBiz uses. So CBiz would actually be able to take the nine percent plus of requested documents that already Casey gave them. And just have like electronic, like work paper filed to, that could easily be imported and migrated over to Fashon Klukke. So there, we hopefully will not have to have repeated effort.
Right.
So I hate re-performance of work. So that's a, a big thing that just happened too, that was just the other day as well. So I was a little surprising phone call though from Mr. McIntyre, but. Obviously, again, prep for doing some of the, for audits, I know for audits, for, that's always on the bone. But for some of the grant work, because with my vacation in July, I'll be able to do some of that. Grant reporting a lot earlier than normal. Thank you for giving the reminder on the budget meetings. So five thirty executive committee meeting will mostly be taken up by, and that will be in Hilton too. That'll be taken up by the ten line M transfers that we have going. And I will, after the delegation meeting is actually done, I will come upstairs and I will post, I'll post all those ten transfers. So everything will be reflected right away in the meetings as far as budget amounts now being available and all those, all those expense lines. Cause I know some expenses are being held up based upon that, so. Again, just very busy with many different things. On a, a personal note, I came a little bit later today because my five-year-old had his kindergarten graduation, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, and, and he was that, he was that one.
Give him a haircut, Chuck, Chuck, did he get a haircut?
Yes, he did, actually.
I tell you, I paid, Chuck, I'll pay.
Tom, long years in.
But again, looking forward to as far as solar array being turned on, so I can register that project with the IRS. And as a test run, I will register our, the complex EV project. Because that one is currently still going on and those chargers were American made. So we actually have any additional number right there, so, but thank you.
Commissioner Godu has a question.
Have we received any additional, okay, so we're a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional surplus for next year's budget?
No, this year actual, first budget.
Oh, this is, this year.
We budgeted the same amount next year, seven and a quarter million that we did this year. So it's good news that already the actual for twenty-five is a hundred sixty K over what we did budget this year. It's already in the current year, which means that theoretically we should have that much, you know, a hundred sixty thousand less of fund balance used.
Right.
And that will be reflected when I do the delegation approved budgets that go out to thirty-seven towns and.
That'll be next year.
Well, so for the, so when the delegation does their vote next week and they approve the budget. I then have the last iteration, the delegation approved budget has to go out to the thirty-six towns in the city of Portsmouth. Also has to go out to New Hampshire Secretary of State and has to go out to New Hampshire DRA. I continuously at each budget stage, update the current year numbers. And so what you'll see is that instead of assuming seven point two five million a pro share, it's gonna be seven point four one million.
Right.
And so that in, again, fund balance usage in the end is that, you know, net of what we. Under on budget versus what are we under, over on revenue. So it looks like we should theoretically have to use that much less in fund balance. So right now, for example, if it's at three point seven million. in fund balance. So right now, for example, if it's at three point seven million.
Okay, so I, I get that part. My concern is that we approved the four percent increase and, and that's grown to four point two six percent. And I'm wondering with the increases in revenue here, if we can, instead of using more of the fund balance somehow reduce the tax rate.
That, that be the on the fly request and then that'd have to come through the executive committee maybe to the delegation.
It could be a full delegation.
It'd have to be on the, well, they'd have to ultimately, it's in, it's on their side. Sometimes the executive committee would like to recommend any changes. Um, but it's not as simple as that relying on budget. So once you approve one thing, they have to prove another change to another change to another change. Resolution eleven would have to change. Again, that's the one that gives the total numbers appropriations, revenues, rate, amount to be raised by taxes and fund balances. So a lot of things would have to be changed on the fly. Could it directly happen? Yes.
It's difficult.
It's not simple. Um, but.
Okay, I was just looking for another opportunity to reduce that rate a little bit.
Well, I mean, it, the executive committee recommended the four point two six. Knowing that the committees did the, the flat four.
Well, I'm not happy that they recommended more than we approved. So I'm trying to somehow get it back, but if, if we can't, we can't.
All right. Moving on, Chantel?
Well, Chuck's so excited to know. Um, so for the nursing home budget, we're at a hundred and thirty four. The assisted living is at forty seven. From an outbreak status, I have nothing to report. Um, some general items, we have one of our routine Medicare Part A audits next week that we are getting ready for. Um, myself, Kendra, Elaine and Jason had our transition call. One of our transition calls was Sedexo to go over kind of objectives, short term, long term goals. Um, just to continue to establish communication. So we had that earlier today. Uh, earlier this week, myself and some of the members of the team, including some of the unit managers who historically haven't been able to attend um, trainings and conferences, attended the capture healthcare training, which was wonderful, learned a lot. Was also able, able to accomplish something which I was very excited about. Um, and will be having a meeting next week. Uh, I've been working to try and get a part B vendor. So from a revenue and expense standpoint, uh, there are certain items that with vendors around who cares in certain supplies, we can actually build some at B. It's a very labor something. So current practice, we've been paying for things that we could otherwise have billed out. So um, we have a meeting with one of the vendors would be able to support some of those items, which would hopefully help reduce some of our expenses. So um, this, this is a company we meet with next week, does support a different county home. I reached out to them. He has wonderful things to say. No cost to us. And um, they also have additional education around wounds and support for staff. So I was excited about that. Um, and the, I guess the big thing, our Chronicle episode airs tonight. So we.
On the dementia.
Yeah, on the virtual, so that'll be on tonight's Chronicle.
That's a nice way to go.
Yeah.
Huge.
Oh, I'm excited. I have a program.
It's all more of the same. We're crazy busy. Everybody's great. All's well. Nothing new.
Just good, good news.
All's well.
All's well. Thank you, dude. Um, Allison.
Oh boy. Um, everything is great. Uh, I want to tell you open enrollment is done. I have good news. Open enrollment is done. We had one person um, that didn't complete their stuff. Um, and that is. Um, I did have a buyout form that came in two hours after I'm accepting the buyout form. It was two hours. It was an eleven to seven person. We had been trying back and forth. I'm letting that roll so we can do it. Um, I do want to just let people know that the NHAC nominations have to be in hopefully by next Friday. I'm saying next Friday because then the following week Chuck and I are away and the deadline is during that week and I want to make sure I can account for all of them. Um, you definitely want to have those individuals uh, nominated because it is the fiftieth and um, it would be nice to have all of our uh, employees recognized in the different categories. Um, so that is done. A couple have already done it. They're well ahead of things. So this too, Kathy, you and somebody else. So that's good. And um, right now we are generating um, PCNs um, for all of the different uh, changes that are going to happen. There is a lot of rumbling in the office with things that are being printed and back and forth with any questions. So if they're doing it and they're having a good time with it. So we'll do double checks on that. Our hope is to get the first wave out by Monday or Tuesday and then the second wave out by the end of the week of next week. Um, so we're doing it two waves just to give them some break and they have to do double checks on it. It's really important we get all that right. So that's where we're at. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, saying open enrollment, but you know, I'm glad I also have a house, but uh, let me tell you what, it's a lot of work. I put a lot of pressure on my supervisors to get this done, three things. Maybe threatening, no, maybe we saw. It took a lot. There was a long, there was a lengthy encouragement.
I do carrots, he does sticks.
But we have a lot of young people on different shifts, which is, which is really difficult because they were very confused on some stuff.
I can relate.
And not trying to give them advice on stuff, well, which sure state, but kind of guiding down the path is very interesting with them.
We had a lot of visitors on Monday from their pocket. Great time to be back.
We tried. Well, at least it got through, right? Um, we have a hundred and forty four in house. Uh, it is that time of year where things are picking up for summer. Uh, a lot of, again, I said last week and again, a lot more females coming in. It was a lot this weekend. Um, if it continues this way, we may be opening up a the small houses we have, when we have to open them, because a lot of these are on methadone and other things, so we cannot ship out and medical issues. Uh, we're still working on take homes. I mean, it's in the process. That will be huge for us. Uh, so we'll see how that goes. I, I had the um, Opiate Debate Committee meeting um, this week. Uh, it was a good meeting. Just to give some highlights, just so you know, total amounts of date, which is as of six, three, twenty five. Uh, state received ninety seven million, four hundred twenty thousand, uh, eighty seven dollars and eighty eight cents. Mount uh, distributed to the qualifying subdivisions. It's twenty three of them, fourteen million, four hundred fifty four thousand, seventy one dollars and ten cents. Mount deposits and dedicated opiate trust fund, eighty seven million, nine hundred sixty six thousand, sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Total amounts of grants and awards, which are very, that are already done so far. Sixty million, nine hundred eighty seven thousand, five hundred ninety dollars. So we've got a lot of money. Housing is a huge one. Um, where no one's coming up real soon is little vendor that we've kind of put out for that will um, will be giving them like five million dollars and they'll be doing the smaller grants to seventy five thousand dollars so they can get out the door quicker than trying to come to a full committee and takes a year because it goes to government council and all these other hoops. So giving a, an, an outside vendor be able to do this is gonna be huge for those small entities that looking for quick money on the, on their grants. There is a couple more um, lawsuits that there are gonna be, do payouts that had, to Assistant Attorney General Fettig believes. Um, Purdue um, is back in bankruptcy court. But it looks like there will be some sort of settlement. With that settlement though, it's gonna have to come to the twenty three subdivisions and a couple other ones. Like other, other have been done for those subdivisions, which is all ten counties to sign off an agreement. Because it's gonna be a, a big payment and part of that agreement is as you know, giving a cable back animals kind of stuff, but all, everybody had to sign off on it, including state. Um, and it's been done before, but that's where the Purdue one is right now.
And is the state gonna send uh, like a request or we get some sort of official request that began the board ruling?
Yes, event, eventually. Okay, that it's being worked on now.
Okay.
With the attorney generals are working on now that then would come out to the subdivisions with an explanation and signing off on it. And what, my understanding is to be do will be looking for not just subdivisions, but other areas that they'll be going out to signing off saying that come forward, blah, blah. They want a certain percentage. So they don't get sued again. Um, people signing off, let them do this large amount of money. Okay, okay. It's all that negotiation, the bankruptcy court, so. Uh, but it's good news. That's like another thirty million plus to the state of New Hampshire uh, from Purdue at, at some point. Um, and so it's almost still over. So, so like, you know, next, next eighteen years, um, thirteen years, seven years, five years that we're still getting, receiving money.
Right.
And tomorrow I have a post from X stress syndrome um, and first responders meeting tomorrow, uh, with the center and so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Moving on to new business, um, old business. I'll just start with, uh, Commissioner Tomorello, do you have any new business?
No, thank you.
You.
Uh, yes.
You would.
I have a little bit of new business. I, I got a phone call from a member of the Taylor family. Uh, who uh, told the story about how we are situated on Taylor Farm and that the uh, new building is on Taylor Farm, previously owned by Taylor Farm Land. Uh, she uh, shared a narrative that uh, we've had a little difficulty of
Collaborating.
Collaborating, at least at this point. Um, and I, I guess one, it, it's clear that one piece of land was donated to us in memory of Dr. Blaisdell and we've obviously memorialized that in the uh, in the Blaisdell wing. Uh, but they're looking for some further recognition that this was Taylor Farm and uh, or dedication or, I, I, I don't think they're looking for a lot, but they would like some kind of recognition. Uh, but I think we need to be clear about exactly what happened. And did we take some piece by eminent domain, which is one of the things she brought up? Uh, was, was the original Taylor Farm donated to us? We can't even find that transaction. And Kathy uh, is, has worked a little bit on um, trying to track some of that down. So I, I would yield to her to share what she found.
Yeah, that, just so that you know, Commissioner, that little bit is like four hours worth of work. That's, that's how much little bit of my time. But they, obviously there was the one deed, okay, that he deeded in nineteen seventy one, I think it was, to the county. The county never took any property from the Taylors. The Taylor family still owns quite a bit of property um, that is a budding one O one and the house that was referred to is the property that's right next door, the little gray house with the farmer's porch on the front. That's the house that Mrs. Taylor lived in until she died and then her son sold it. It's been sold several times since. But the, the bulk of the, the remainder of the property was deeded from um, Fred to Fred and his wife Bonnie Bell. And then Bonnie Bell deeded the property, all of, all the remaining property that was owned by she and Fred um, to her son Everett and his wife Rita. And Everett died, then Rita died and her family of eight children all sued each other. Um, and there's a huge court case upstairs. Well, it's actually, it's not upstairs. They did it in Stratford County. Uh, because it was property also in Stratford County. Um, and those eight heirs still own that property. So there was, there's no other properties that the Taylor family owned that came over to the county other than the twenty acres that Fred deeded to the county.
Um, in nineteen seventy one, what, how did we, how did we get, she said that we, that was taken by eminent domain. How, how, and you say you don't have any record of that. How, did, did we pay for it? Is there a dollar amount attached to a deed?
Well, back then you, you didn't do dollar amounts. There was no dollar amount, which is twenty acres of land um, deeded over. At the same time, the cops deeded property to the county as well. So, you know, I'm assuming there was probably a, an exchange of money, but it doesn't say that. But it doesn't say he's donating the land either, either. Okay, but you know, I mean, if in fact he did, and I'm thinking he probably did, because if the whole, if the whole um, issue was to make sure that Dr. Blaisdell, who was his friend, was memorialized, that's why we have the Blaisdell wing. You know, I mean.
Well, that was a good, this exercises a nice history lesson in how the Blaisdell wing got established. So thank you for that, Kathy.
I, I had the idea.
I will tell you, the other interesting thing that I did find back in eighteen eighty one was a um, a release to Rockingham County for the indexing system pattern from the person who had it pa- patented uh, Campbell in the US, you know, trade office. And, and uh, so yeah, it was pretty interesting because I had never seen, so of course I printed that out because I thought it was pretty darn cool. But yeah, I mean, there's, there was a lot of stuff going on here, but I can assure you that never taking. The only taking that ever took place was for one O one. That had nothing to do, has nothing to do with us. And, and just so you know, um, Commissioner Godu, if there was a taking, we would have had to have a court case. There would be documentation here. There would, it, it's very extensive. You can't just take. You just take property. So, yeah, no.
That's why often there's, that's what, there's a negotiation between, rather than going through the court process, they often negotiate with homeowners to purchase and you can negotiate. So there's actually a deed in the face of the evident. But, um.
So she, she mentioned to me, you know, this is a family history and it's probably oral and, you know, not that reliable, but she said in the nineteen fifties is when the debt land was donated in memory of Dr. Blaisdell. And then, and then the one in nineteen seventy was for a different purpose and you, you're, you've got different information than that.
It's not substantiated. It sounds like it's not substantiated by the, the registry records.
Eighteen fifty. There was no deed in nineteen fifty. No.
Uh, well, thank you for that research. I think this sort of, um, without any additional information that corroborates her, um, you know, what her story is. I feel like there's not much where, any, anywhere to go at this point.
I agree.
As a public service announcement, I will say that anybody, it is very fun. I, I'm with you Kathy. I could spend hours on the rabbit hole of the registry of deeds and having, will continue to do so, so. But it is a history, a walk through history. So thank you for your efforts on behalf of the county and otherwise. Happy to do it. Any other new business, old businesses? In, here none. Uh, we, I don't see anyone here for public comment, but um, so with that, I will take a motion to enter into non-public.
Move to enter into non-public uh, session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA ninety one A, column three, number two.
Second.
And the motion, Commissioner Tomorello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Bye, everyone. Have a nice afternoon. Good afternoon.
Can I do my?
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. We have come out of non-public session. We had three non-public sessions and I'm gonna turn to Commissioner Godu to make a, one motion with regard to the first non-public session.
Uh, I move to seal the first of the three non-public session uh, because it may render, no, may adversely affect the reputation of any person other than member of this board. Um, and just for clarification, we do not plan to seal uh, sessions two and three.
How long do you stand on that?
Indefinitely.
Okay. Um, on any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomorello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, um, we have a couple motions to make and if the um, board would indulge me, I'll be happy to make those motions. The first is I move to approve a one-time wage adjustment of a dollar seventy five per hour for those um, in the assisted in el- for eligible categories uh, in the assisted living facility. Um, and I think that is it.
You specify the, the amount?
Yeah.
Of a dollar seventy five?
I moved to approve a one-time wage adjustment of a dollar seventy five per hour for those in four eligible positions within assisted living facility as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services and Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Second.
Um, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomorello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we had tabled uh, a motion with respect to the Wellsky agreement and I move to bring that uh, to uh, bring that table motion forward.
Table.
Off the table.
Second.
And the motion, Commissioner Tomorello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Let me read the motion. Uh, I move to approve the Wellsky Corporation license and service agreement for a one-time implementation fee of three thousand six hundred dollars plus an annual fee of eight thousand four hundred dollars with a six percent annual. plus an annual fee of eight thousand four hundred dollars with a six percent annual billing increase for the period beginning June twenty twenty five for a term of one year with automatic renewals for successive one-year terms and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long Care Services.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And there's one final motion to be made.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have to do a roll call vote because you're not here. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a nice afternoon. Enjoy the weather.